I'd have to say what I really enjoy about Happy State Bank is the morale that we have. Part of that goes back to the ownership that we talked about. Everybody understands as an owner, we're going to think like owners and not like managers. And we truly have each other's back each and every day. So just the teamwork, everyone works so hard for each other, knowing that the ultimate goal is that each one of our customers is going to leave this bank, knowing that we have given them everything we have as bankers to exceed any expectations they had out of our bank.
Hi, dear everyone, please rise. Thank you for being here today. I'd like to ask our commissioners, Ms. Sims, to give her invitation today.
Would you please join me in prayer? Dear Father God, we thank you so much for this day. And Lord, we thank you for all the blessings that our community and that our citizens have. Lord, we pray for guidance to make this even a better city. And Lord, we pray for all of the caregivers who are there from today. Lord, we pray for our own first responders that we have in this community that are so outstanding. And Lord, we pray for our soldiers that are defending our country so that we can have meetings like this today. Lord, we pray for your guidance and for your grace. We ask these things in the Savior's name, Jesus. Amen.
If you'd join me for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the privilege today to read four proclamations for various groups, so we're going to come down front and invite the groups up as you come to the microphone. If you all would have a seat. I'd like first to ask the people that are here representing CASA to come forward. We can ask you to sit in the center of the podium if you would. We'll get you. We'll get a good camera shot. Before I read this, just tell you that I think it's very important that we be aware of what this agency is doing and that we raise awareness and ask for more volunteers that can help our young children who are being abused. We saw statistics today that are shameful about Potter and Rando County in comparison to the rest of the state and what we need for advocates here to help these children. These are minor children, some months old, that need advocates to go to court for them. And that's what this organization does, so we're trying to raise the awareness. And today, we're proud to read this proclamation. We're ashamed, I think, as a community that we stand higher than many other cities in our state. We have to recognize that we need more help in this area. So while we're very proud of what they do, they need help. This proclamation today says, "Whereas the citizens of Amarillo pride themselves on giving back to the community, contributing to the quality of life among our fellow citizens; and whereas Amarillo Area CASA, an association of the National Court-appointed Special Advocates CASA Association, speaks for the best interest of abused and neglected children who are involved in juvenile course; and whereas Amarillo and area counties confirm that more than 1,255 children suffer from some form of abuse or neglect in 2011; and whereas, through a national effort, Amarillo community members join together to raise awareness for those children who are victims of abuse and neglect throughout the month of April; and whereas this effort gives the abused and neglected children of our community and around the country a chance for a safe, positive future, not just one day, but for a lifetime." Now therefore, we, mayor and city commissioners of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Amarillo Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month on this day, signed by the mayor and the four commissioners. And I would like to introduce Barbara Richardson, the head of CASA. I've heard her story, and I must tell you, she's sort of a volunteer, became an interim director for 13 years. So I'd like to introduce Barbara.
Oh, thank you, and thank you, city commissioners.
Yes, please.
I am really honored to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of our abused and neglected children. We do need volunteers, and I have someone here that can give you information about it today. Our next training is in May. We are the second set of eyes and ears for the judge. We are appointed to a case after they have been removed from CPS. The judge will appoint us, and we do our own private investigations, and return that information to the courts, to the judge, because he is the one that makes that final decision. The caseworkers are overworked, and they have way too many children in their caseload, and they need help, and these children need us desperately. There's a brochure outside, and it has a little symbol on the back, and you can put your iPhone app to it, and it'll take you right to our website. We have applications for volunteers online. Please join us. It takes a village to make a difference in the lives of these children, and they need you. And if you can give me one hour a week, you can make the difference in the life of an abused child. Thank you.
Barbara, would you tell us who the workers are and who are the residents?
These are, this is my staff and board member and...
Assistant.
Assistant. This is Hannah, and Kristen is our volunteer coordinator. Hannah is my right hand. Since I volunteered 13 years ago to help out until they found someone, they promised we'd issue they'd find someone. And Hannah helps me. Kristen is the volunteer coordinator. Allison is a caseworker. Vince is a dedicated board member, who was a board member years ago, was my board president, and has come back to the phone. So we're happy to have him back. And Vince...
Nick Martin.
Nick. And Laura is a case manager.
And Barbara, if I could speak up, any organization, anyone in the audience is a member of, I know Barbara would love the opportunity to come and tell the CASA story in the solicitation of volunteers, because they need them, and they do such a great job, and they are so overworked in their system. So anybody that belongs to the Amarillo Ward of Realtors or anything like that can have a presentation.
We would love to make a presentation. Subway schools, churches, we all do. We need to get the story out about our abused children. And our rate in Potter County is more than double what the state average is, so we need to step up and help these children.
Thank you for...
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you do a presentation?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Shantae with LifeGift? Or anyone else that's with you? Are you staff? All of you?
Yes.
Whereas of the largest city in the Texas Panhandle, driven by a variety of industries, including healthcare, Amarillo is home to nearly 200,000 Texans. It is also home to LifeGift, a not-for-profit organization which strives to save and enhance lives by maximizing organ and tissue donation. LifeGift celebrates 25 years of vision of a community where everyone says yes to donation. And whereas, more than 113,000 women, men, women, and children wait life-saving organ transplants across the country, nearly 11,000 are Texans. Thousands of others wait for life-enhancing tissue transplants, which will return them to the lives they once knew. And whereas, April is National Donate Life Month, a nationwide observance which recognizes the importance of organ and tissue donation, raising awareness of the dire need for registered donors. It is also time to remember donors and their families, thanking them for the precious gifts they gave. And whereas, the city of Amarillo proudly recognizes LifeGift for saving and enhancing lives in Amarillo, Texas, and across the country. Now therefore, we, mayor and city commissioners of the city of Amarillo, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Amarillo's Donate Life Month, and congratulate and commend LifeGift for enhancing the lives of so many, given under our hands and seal of office this 10th day of April 2012. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for this proclamation to the mayor and to the commissioners. LifeGift is a nonprofit organization here in West Texas, and our focus is increasing awareness about organ and tissue donation. We've been celebrating this gift that so many families give to save another person's life, and each of you in this room has an opportunity to do the same. Through our state registry, which has been now in place for about, since 2005, each of you can register and become donors. You can make that decision and take the pressure off your family at the time of your death and having to make that decision for you. You can do that by going to donatelifetexas.org or the LifeGift website, lifegift.org, and register to become an organ and tissue donor. From the families that we serve, the feedback that we get, and oftentimes in tragic situations, donation is something that helps them as they're healing and going through that grieving process, saying, knowing that their loved one's death was not in vain. So make a difference and register today. Thank you. Thank you.
Judith Christwoman, and then everybody with the Amarillo City Communications Center. Now these are the folks when we call 911, they're on the other end of the line to get us the help that we need. Oh, you guys. Everybody's like that against the wall. And they also keep up... They also keep up with our police and firefighters when they're on the job. And we spent, as a commission, about, I started to say a week, we spent an hour, seemed like a week, with them, you know, watching what they do and with different, what do you call it, communicators, different dispatchers. And I was amazed at what they do. I don't know how they do what they do. They're keeping up with everything that's going on with the city with all their police officers and all their firefighters, and then with the calls coming in. So you guys do a great job, and I'm glad to know that you're on the other end of line with my call. Come on, Asia. It says, "Whereas, the professional public safety telecommunications plays a crucial role in the protection of life and property, the preservation of society and its laws, and the provision of municipal services. And whereas, these telecommunications are highly dedicated and deeply motivated people who daily serve our citizens in countless ways without derecognition by the beneficiaries of their services. And whereas, these telecommunications are frontline contacts with our citizens and the general public, and are uniquely charged for the responsibility of maintaining citizen satisfaction and a positive image of our city to the general public. Now therefore, we, mayor and city commissioners of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 8th through April 14th, 2012, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, and urge our citizens to recognize the importance of these workers, given under our hands and seal of office this 10th day of April 2012." Would you like to say, Judith?
I'd like to thank the commission, mayor, thank you very much for this proclamation. Our telecommunications work very hard to serve our citizens and support our responders in public safety. And most of the year, they do that in the background. They don't make face to face contact with the public, they don't see the responders face to face very often. And what that's like is for is just to allow us the opportunity to shine a spotlight on what they do and really tell them thank you for all their hard work.
Thank you.
This is Jessica Martin. She is a telecommunications. Leanne Raitt is one of our supervisors. Georgiana Flores, Consondra Perez, and Tiffany Shepherd are telecommunications, and Carrie Bassett is our assistant manager.
Thank you. Are there some representatives from Impact Futures here? Any others or just...
Just this.
Okay. Whereas, Impact Futures, an anti-grub community coalition, is committed to reducing underage drinking in Amarillo. And whereas, Impact Futures is sponsoring three town hall meetings on underage drinking in April at the following locations, the Central Church of Christ, Sneed Hall, the United Citizens Forum, 901 North Hayden, and the Westwood Community Center at 1516 South Rivers. Those could be, I guess I should have said this, April 10th at the Central Church of Christ, April 17th at the United Citizens Forum, and April 24th at the Westwood Community Center. Whereas, enforcement of the legal drinking age is an adult responsibility. Now therefore, we, mayor and city commissioners of the city of Amarillo, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2012 as Alcohol Awareness Month, and call upon citizens, parents, hospitals, and schools in our community to help raise awareness about the critical public health issue of underage drinking, given under our hands and seal of office this 10th day of April 2012.
Impact Futures is a, for a community coalition, we're working to reduce substance abuse among teens. And of course, one of the biggest, most horrific substances that is being abused is alcohol. And our kids are having house parties that are being sponsored by parents. So the town hall meeting is to raise awareness about what alcohol really does to our kids. So our mayor has already helped us so much with the, because we're also trying to reduce the synthetic narcotics, all that stuff that has come up. We're trying to close those places down if we can, and that's probably going to be a long mission, but we have great support. So thank you so much, mayor and commissioners. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Sure.
Thank you.
Is one of your nation's friends here?
This is Nelly Viegomez. She is, again, we are a coalition, and so we pull from every spot that we can. She's the director of the Texas Peace Project. And then this is our project coordinator, Kristin Kinnon. Thank you all.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the Gregory Stato Meeting of the Amarillo City Commission to help on the third floor of City Hall this Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. The first item of business on today's agenda is the minutes, attached is a copy of the minutes. And those minutes are related to the meeting of April 3rd. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
Mayor, I move for approval of minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
All those in favor of the minutes as presented?
Aye.
opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. The next item of business is ordinance number 7322. This is the second and final reading of an ordinance amending the Amarillo Municipal Code to add a new chapter, 18-4, establishing the Amarillo, the city of Amarillo drainage utility and its services. The ordinance further dedicates city assets to the utility and grants those exemptions required by Texas Local Government Code. Funds collected under the Amarillo Drainage Utility may only be used for purposes directly related to drainage systems. This is the first of two ordinances necessary to establish and implement proposed drainage utility. We've had, of course, this item many times, and we would ask then now for comments from the public, if there are any comments from the public. And we would ask you to keep your comments to three minutes if you do today, and please state your name and address as you come forward. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cindy Bula. I live at 1400 Reagan Court here in Amarillo. And I, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know each of your jobs and those of our city leaders is a very difficult one, and finding balance, especially on this issue, has been a long and thoughtful process. On behalf of the Amarillo Association of Realtors, of which I am their 20th hall chairman of the board, in its role as a private property rights advocate for the citizens of Amarillo, we have conducted our own investigation into the need for stormwater drainage infrastructure and available equitable means of funding that need. Its research included impact comparisons with similar-sized Texas cities, personal testimony of its members as to existing drainage issues throughout the city, and interviews with city officials. Research materials were provided both by the city of Amarillo and the Texas Association of Realtors. Our association concluded the need for the infrastructure to be real and the dedicated drainage assessment method of funding that need to be the most equitable to the property owners of our city. Our primary reservations to the ordinance are the potential for exemptions and the potential for increases in the rates. And we would urge commissioners to resist both possibilities at this time and in the foreseeable future. As a property rights advocate, the Amarillo Association of Realtors takes a decision to increase taxes or fees on any property owner very seriously. However, after careful consideration, the Amarillo Association is here to speak in support of the ordinance, provided no exemptions are granted other than those statutorily mandated. Thank you.
Ms. Bula, thank you for your comments. Very important consideration. We appreciate your research and your acceptance of this.
My name is Greg. I'm on Riverside at 2710 Chalk Drive. I'm speaking today as a private citizen, not as a business owner or operator. We have a great city, and we have enjoyed extremely low tax rates for many, many years. I believe that other similar-sized cities in our area have much higher property tax rates. While low taxes are good for people and they attract investment, risk-taking, and entrepreneurship, they can become a problem if the income produced by those low rates is not adequate to properly fund those city services that we need. We have celebrated our low property tax rates for many years, but now it seems our city does not have the adequate funds to build enough police and fire stations, take care of the expansion of utilities for new developments, build water and storage and pumping systems, and to properly maintain our streets and manage our drainage issues. I've read that our street maintenance topping schedule is now 37 years. That really is unacceptable. I work near Bell and Hillside intersection. When it rains, and sometimes it does, the intersection fills up with water very rapidly. I've seen it as high as two to three feet within just a few minutes. The intersection at Fulton and Bell is another area that literally becomes dangerous when a rain does occur. I applaud the city commissioner and mayor for setting up the plate and taking the heat from the public regarding the proposed drainage fee. If the tax rates and issues had been properly managed over the last 10 to 15 years, with an eye to the future, we would not be in this pinch that we are experiencing now. I am a proponent of a somewhat limited government, and I do not like paying more fees and taxes. And I also understand that this new fee is going to be somewhat of a burden on organizations that own or control or hold large parcel of land. But we all use the roads and the streets in town. Our streets cannot continue to be used for drainage issues. A city our size needs to have streets that are easy to navigate, that are safe, and provide emergency transportation routes. We must start dealing with the issues facing our city and start finding ways to look to the future and solve the problems and challenges we have right now. I support the proposed fee, number 7323. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. I would like a comment on one thing you said, Mr. Bryant, and that is that I had never seen a number as high as 37 years for resurfacing streets, but I had seen 27, 29 years. We have now, with the increase, penny increase in taxes, which meant $16.41 increase to the average homeowner, to the average homeowner, that was, allowed us to more than double our street overlay project this year. It also, I think, enables us to bring that time period down from 29 years, and within the next four years, we would be able to announce that we're back on a seven to 10-year rotation, which is what all the experts say we need for proper control of asphalt in those streets. It also precludes the rebuilding of streets like we have to do on Hillside. That was actually caused by a poor base, another issue, but we have more streets like Fulton and others that we have to deal with now as a complete rebuild. It is seven to 10 nights more expensive to do that, and our commission has accepted a slightly higher tax rate in order to add policemen and to take care of our street problems. So I think we are addressing those issues. I appreciate your comment, but I don't want people to think that it is, I hadn't seen 37. The fact is now, with a continuance of what we've had this year, within the next four to five years, we'll be back on a seven to 10-year rotation. And we have kind of our standards here. I know those are not exact, so I'm assuming those numbers are correct. Is that correct? Okay. But your comment about the drainage utility is important to us, and we appreciate the support of that. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else would like to comment? We've received so many comments in last weeks that are all important to us, but anyone else would like to make a comment? Pro or con? Thank you all for very thoughtful comments, and I would then entertain a motion. Is there any comment from the commission party? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of ordinance number 7322.
Second. All those in favor of ordinance number 7322 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. Ordinance number 7323, I might comment, this is the second part of this structure, and that will be, this is the second and final reading of an ordinance amending the Amarillo Municipal Code, Chapter 18-4, the top rules for the city of Amarillo's drainage utility, defining relevant terms, letting a schedule of charges, providing for an appeals process and related matters. This ordinance establishes a base charge of a typical equivalent residential unit at $2.51 per month. This is the second, and of two ordinances necessary to establish and implement the proposed drainage utility. Are there any comments from the audience about this portion, which really is interrelated with the first? Any comments? Any comments from the commission? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 7323.
Aye.
All those in favor of ordinance number 7323 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. Ordinance number 7324, this is the second final reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of an 8.06 and a 28.18 acre tract of Section 135, Block 2, ABNM Survey Potter County in the vicinity of Hastings Avenue and Grand Street, to change from agricultural district to light commercial district and heavy commercial district respectively. Are there any questions about this second and final reading on this proposed ordinance? Any comments from the audience? From the commission? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7324.
Second.
All those in favor of ordinance number 7323 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. Ordinance number 7324, this is the second final reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of an 8.06 and a 28.18 acre tract of Section 135, Block 2, ABNM Survey Potter County in the vicinity of Hastings Avenue and Grand Street, to change from agricultural district to light commercial district and heavy commercial district respectively. Are there any questions about this second and final reading on this proposed ordinance? Any comments from the audience? From the commission? I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 7324.
Second.
All those in favor of ordinance number 7324 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. Ordinance number 7325, this is the second final reading of an ordinance changing the zoning of Tascosa Estates, Unit Number 8, in Section 11, Block 9, BSNM Survey Potter County in the vicinity of Fairway Drive and Acosta Drive, to change from planned development District 165C to amended planned development 165D for single-family detached home development. Are there any questions about this second final reading from the audience? From the commission? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move for approval of ordinance number 7325.
I second that motion.
All those in favor of ordinance number 7325 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. Resolution 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG application. This resolution approves the application of the 2012 JAG grant and the related interlocal agreement for Potter County. Under the terms of the grant, the cities of Amarillo will apply for $108,305 and will allocate the grant proceeds on an equal basis with Potter County. The Amarillo Police Department will use $54,152.50, which is the city's portion of the grant, to purchase three heavy ballistic vests for swat, five stock... The Amarillo Police Department will use $54,152.50, which is the city's portion of the grant, to purchase three heavy ballistic vests for SWAT, five Stalker radar systems for the motor swats, and a public address sound system for the civilian law enforcement shooting complex. The 2012 allocation represents a reduction of 27% from last year's allocation. Are there any questions about this resolution from the audience? Or any further explanation needed? Any from the commission? I'd entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution for the 2012 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application.
Second.
All those in favor of resolution?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. Court appointments, boards and commissions? We have appointments needed for the following boards: Environmental Advisory Committee and the Guyanos Saunders Resource Center Oversight Committee. Do we have any nominations for those boards?
Yeah, mayor, I would like to nominate the Environmental Advisory Committee, Mr. Ken Pearl, and for the Guyanos Saunders Resource Center Oversight Committee, Ms. Anita Borrell and Vern Raffin.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any comments on the floor about those nominations? From the commission? We have a motion, all those in favor, that was made in the room. We have a motion, all those in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes with a five-o vote. The next item is the consent agenda. It's recommended that the following items be approved, that the city manager be authorized to execute all documents necessary for each transaction. A is the purchase of...
Mr. Mayor?
Actually, let me read them, and then you...
Oh, okay.
Good. Purchase of digital cameras and lenses for the police department. B is the award of transit dispatch console equipment. C is the award of HDAC system for Hollywood Road Treatment Plant Administration Building. D is the award of floor plan replacement for Caterpillar scraper. E is the approval application for the 2012 summer food service program grant. F is the approval of the 2012 City of Amarillo Land Use Plan. And G is the sale of property. Are there any items that need to be removed or separate consideration by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item number F, I would like to remove for separate consideration. I'm part of that protocol plan, and I need to knock out.
Sir, we'll remove item F for separate consideration. Are there any other items that need to be removed or discussed separately? Any explanation of consent agenda items that's needed by the audience? From the commission? Not an entertaining motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda with item F removed.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda removing item F, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes, now we'll consider item F.
Mayor, I would move for approval of item F.
I second that motion.
Due discussion about item F. I understand, Commissioner, you'll be...
I'll be not voting out.
Okay. All those in favor of item F?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes with a 4-0-1 abstention. So that item stinks. Okay, that concludes the regularly scheduled meeting of the Amarillo City Commission. And it's our customary at this time to allow citizens of the community with matters pertaining to city's policies, programs, and services to speak to the commission. The floor is now open for those comments and they're encouraged. Would anyone like to come forward and make a comment? Sir?
Honorable mayor, commissioners, fellow citizens. Alan, would you please speak?
Alan Abraham. I'm on the spot, I won't waste my time.
But you do need to address the dials, not the audience.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's a little technical term. What can I say? NASCAR applause. I'm 7205 Southwest 35th Avenue in Amarillo. I'm here to voice my disapproval and my disappointment of the commission's handling current developments in the downtown revitalization activities. This is my shot over the bow as a warning, and not meant in any way to disable the ship. First of all, an important promise was made by the previous city commission and has been left unchallenged by this city commission as well during the selling of the Wallace-Bajali Agreement to the general public, that the developer would assume all financial risks in the pre-development period of the convention hotel, specifically in the words of the awarding of a master development contract, and I quote, "WB assumes all, Wallace-Bajali, assumes all financial risks prior to the funding of a prospective project," as passed February 15, 2011, in the action title on the agenda. Now, the Amarillo Local Government Corporation, heretofore referred to as ALGC, has since amended that condition for payment while in executive session to allow some $945,000 in reimbursement payments made to WB. So now, the taxpayers, and not WB, have been forced to assume some of the costs and risks that are being incurred at this preliminary stage. A closed session of ALGC November 2nd, 2011, and not a single notice, to my knowledge, to the public that this was taking place. We were later informed of the amount, yes, but never given the rationale for why we would begin using taxpayer dollars at a preliminary stage in this development. Next, we come to a stated deadline, March 12, 2012, in the February 2011 agreement between the city and Wallace-Bajali, where several benchmarks on progress being made by the master developer, again, with no progress report made publicly. Instead, I saw this commission call themselves into two executive sessions, that's closed sessions, on the day after that deadline, and I can only assume they were in damage control mode, withholding any progress information on those benchmarks. And these benchmarks carry with them, I remind you, the power of a decision by you to proceed or terminate the relationship. And I dare say, the public in general does not have at this time a feel for the development of our hotel. And there you sit, in control of the information on what I would call the public relations profile for Wallace-Bajali, instead of helping Amarillo citizens grasp in real time where we are on the construction of this hotel. Thank you very much for listening.
Mr. Abraham?
I'll sit down.
Would you mind returning the podium?
Oh, you're...
But if you don't want to, go ahead and sit down.
That's fine.
I just want to tell you, there's a plethora of accusations in there, and I would think that under the open meetings rules, we should not get into a back-and-forth discussion by...
We should not.
But I would like to ask that we refer this, and I know this you have written out, to the city manager, so we can sit down in the next week, and we invite you to sit down and try and address these on a piece-by-piece, item-by-item basis.
I would love it.
So we can try and diffuse some of this and address some of it so we'll understand it better. Is that fair enough?
I chose this setting to make sure it is in the public realm.
That's fine. And that's perfectly fine.
And now, if we want to go into Star Chamber and talk about it?
Go in there.
Go in there. Star Chamber.
What Star Chamber?
Secret meeting.
Oh, I don't know about a secret meeting.
That's what's wrong with being, being...
I don't know of any secret meetings, Mr. Abraham. Very accusatory, but unreliable is not. There are no executive sessions that are proper and legal.
I realize that.
Would you like to come to a special meeting where we sit down and try and figure this out?
I would like to be at public special meetings.
Okay, so you don't wish to have us, so you want it on the agenda, you don't wish to come and talk to us individually and see them, because you're always able to come back to a public meeting. But would you like to address it and try and sort through these so we can have a valuable discussion and interchange where we try and dissolve some of these? Would you like to do that?
In a public setting, yes, I would.
So you don't want to have a meeting and try and do that, you only want to do it when you're able to address it from the podium?
That's fine.
You have that choice?
No, I want dialogue.
Well, do you want a dialogue with us in the next week? And you're welcome to come back and sharing in that public, okay? Would you like that?
Oh, that caveat, that sounds fair.
I think it's fair. Let's do that this next week. Thank you very much, sir.
Alan, or Mr. Abraham, for you lead the podium. Because I am a member of this commission, I'm a member of the former commission, and I'm a member of the LGC.
And so is he.
And I have never, ever participated in a vote being taken in a closed or executive session, never in my life. So you're sitting around.
You're looking... Let's, defensive Jim, can you just talk...
Let's not kind of...
I don't want to call that order. I'm going to call order. We are beyond a presentation in the open meeting. We will ask that those discussions take place separately or as an agenda item, okay? Thank you. Any other comments? Please come forward. Thank you. Please, your office is coming in. Sir, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Glenn Ryan, I promise to be more gentle. There's a...
Your address, please, just for the record.
7201 Columbia Line. Thank you, sir. There's a ordinance or directive or something on the books that all new businesses opening up, they have to establish greenery, I think, in front of it or something.
Landscape ordinance?
Yeah, landscape ordinance, I assume. It seems that we need to update that or regulate it or something, because I find that cool season grasses are being sown on narrow strips that don't belong in there, they don't grow in those conditions. I find them watering year-round. Icing streets in the winter are messing up your car if you've been to the car wash, because the wind does blow in Amarillo. And I think some of this needs to be addressed. We might get more like Albuquerque, in spite of all the Mr. Advocates' work, and he stays on top of the water issues, I know that. He came to our landslide before he addressed the commission, so we have to fool those. And anyway, we have a, we have a need to kind of conform to what we have rather than thinking we're in a high water use oasis, but we're not. And I think some updates should be. It might be more like Albuquerque, so without you don't plant anything that needs water every day. If it does, it's watered with an underground system of some kind. But I think this needs to be addressed. I don't know where it sits as far as need with the commission, but I see some need to, because of what we have, it's not green, it's not, it's not good for the area, and I think we need to update that.
Mr. Ryan, I'm going to refer that to staff and ask that we address this. We have had discussions about when to address this, and you make valid points. We know that half of the water use in Amarillo, Texas is for landscaping use, and we think that's way too much. I shouldn't say we think that. We've sure discussed the concern. And I think we would refer that to staff and ask that we do press forward on those issues and address those issues. I think it's a wise statement on your part.
Okay, it's not just big items, these other things that's being addressed, but if we get out of water, it's going to be a big issue. It's going to be a big issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming forward. Thank you. Anyone else comment, please? Okay, if not, the meeting will stand adjourned. Thank you very much for your presence today. Thank you.